I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And good evening, and I apologize for the delay. First order of business is roll call, please.
Ms. Doherty, here. Ms. Laraba, here. Mr. Leahy.
Here.
Mr. Larry.
Here.
Ms. Martin.
Here.
Mayor Melanazzo.
Here.
Mr. Conway.
Here.
Seven present.
Thank you. Again, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The first order of business under special order of business is a public hearing on inter-district school choice, school choice program. I will recognize Superintendent Scott.
Thank you, Your Honor. In the past, all public schools have chosen to not be a school choice district in part because of the additional costs associated with, for example, special education services of children who would come into the district, and we have voted no. I guess by process and procedure, we do need to open it up for public comment. Is that correct, Your Honor?
That's correct. At this, at this time, I will entertain anyone who would like to speak in favor, in favor, in favor. Hearing done, that portion of the public hearing is closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition, in opposition, in opposition? The public hearing is closed. What's the wish of the committee? Adopt a recommendation? Ms. Martin?
I'd make a motion to adopt the recommendation and to not participate in the school choice program.
Motion by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Laraba. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Doherty.
Yes.
Ms. Laraba.
Yes.
Mr. Leahy.
Yes.
Mr. Larry.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mayor Melanazzo.
Yes.
Mr. Conway.
Yes.
Seven yeas, approve.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, it gives me great pleasure along with Dr. Scott to introduce our newly appointed Lowell High School Headmaster, Edward J. Rosmaric is here with us this evening. There is a bit of a resume in your packet this evening. Mr. Rosmaric has served as Assistant Principal of North Reading High School since 2006. Previously, he had served as Assistant Principal at Mansfield High School and was a 2002 recipient of the Boston Center for Adult Education Outstanding Educator Award. He's a, he previously had been a practicing attorney and has a great deal of education and experience in building a safe school community and will work to ensure a positive welcoming learning environment for our students at Lowell High School. So, on behalf of my colleague, I'd like to welcome Headmaster-elect, Mr. Rosmaric.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dr. Scott, members of school committee, thank you for having me tonight. Thank you very much for this appointment. I'm very looking forward to this. I have been welcomed so warmly to Lowell since receiving the appointment. Parents I've met at school, students who I've met, teachers have come up to me. I'm really looking forward to this. The things that I've heard about the city, the things that I've heard and know from my own research about the school have really given me a lot to look forward to here. Coming from a smaller school district, therefore with limited resources, what we have, what I see here in Lowell to offer to the school is just almost overwhelming. I'm not going to say overwhelming because I think it's something I can come in and work with, and I'm very much looking forward to that. I understand there are some problems ahead. It's going to be a pretty tough, excuse me, tough summer for you all and some of the decisions that are ahead, and then I get to come in and work with it, starting in July. But I think I'm up to it and looking forward to, to working with all of you for a long while. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for being here. We all look forward to it. Your start date, as I understand, is July 1st, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Next item would be to accept the minutes of the regular school committee, committee meeting of April 21st. Motion by Mr. Leahy, seconded by Ms. Doherty. All those in favor of accepting the minutes as presented, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, to vote? Thank you. Permission to enter? We do not have any tonight, so moving on to memorials. We have four memorials that I'd like to bring forward to the committee as a whole. The first is Mary E. Burke Gary, mother of Kathleen Gary, Riley School teacher and State Representative Carleen M. Gary. Adele Askey Kaven, mother of Phil Curtin, Title I social worker. Pamela Shagru, wife of William Shagru, Wang School teacher. And the last, Warren Joyce, husband of Jan Joyce, Wang School teacher. Could we please all rise? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Leahy.
Yeah.
Oh. I'm sorry? Okay, thank you.
Five, six, and seven.
Robert Sanders Saunders, a member of a prominent Lowell family. Dorothy Culliard, a member of a prominent fam, family. And Linda Daly, wife of Barry Daly, Lowell High School Science Teacher. Thank you. Could we all rise in a moment of silence and dock in chambers? May they rest in peace. There's no unfinished business this evening. Public participation, no. Motion, no, I believe. Subcommittee reports. We have two finance subcommittees. Chair recognizes Mr. Larry.
Just the first one to move to make a motion for approval for our meeting on April 21st.
Motion by Mr. Larry, seconded by Mr. Conway. Motion to approve the minutes as presented. Any comments, questions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, to vote? Thank you, Mr. Larry.
And the second one was a meeting we just held previously, the finance committee specifically addressing K through eight. The meeting was well attended by various parents and, and our staff from the K through eight community. In addition, the entire Lowell School Committee was present, as well as the entire, the senior administration, the cabinet were, were here as well. The items discussed were the, the proposed budget cuts as they stand as of May 5th. For the elementary school, the proposed cuts are 2.5 million. For the middle schools, the proposed is 1.5 million, which essentially equates to, from a human being standpoint, are four human beings for the middle schools and three human beings for the elementary schools, otherwise called FTEs. There was interesting dialogue from all members of the, of the school committee and previously to the subcommittee meeting, there's been interesting dialogue and ongoing dialogue with members of the community, specifically the parents and, and teachers and staff of, of the elementary and middle schools. This is a proposal from the administrat, from the administration. The administration did articulate that certain areas that they're still looking at, specifically one particular area, the paraprofessional area where there's recommended in elementary alone of 38 cuts, they're still looking at the number and drilling down to the specific schools to, to see if that's actually a number they're going to be recommending. In addition, there's, there's other areas like special education teachers, et cetera. There was other dialogue. I guess some of the highlights for the recommended cuts at this point are really, I guess the word to put is, is sad, I guess is the best word. A lot of committee members expressed frustration in regards to the amount of money. Some suggestions have come up specifically from Mr. Leahy to take a look again at, at busing, which I think Mr. Dakota is actually taking another look at that to see where we can achieve a savings in that area while still abiding by our legal requirements. Addition, an interesting point by Mr. Leahy again was the daytime sub account. I think that's something that we need to be tracking and maybe being a little aggressive next year going forward. Ms. Martin was articulate regarding, explaining, you know, this position is not of our own making, obviously. It's a making of the economy. The state doesn't have any more money. The federal government has already provided us a significant stimulus, some of which we're already living under for this budget year. The local folks are also challenged, the city council. You know, one of the areas that we needed to address, like Ms. Martin pointed out, is definitely sitting down with each and every one of our unions to look for, you know, I guess the concession's the only word I can look, look to explain. And I think the, the administration through the superintendent has had dialogue with members of our, the president of our, our Teachers Union and our LSAA and other unions regarding that specific request. The difficulty, I think, that the unions are in is right now, as of today, there isn't a finalized number in terms of what our budget's, you know, going to be. The budget at this point is, is proposed to be cut between 7 to 9 million. And those numbers are huge. Obviously, we're going to look, if it was 7 million, we're going to look for some sort of, you know, working with our unions to have that type of monies coming back. Without working with them, we are going to have massive cuts. And I think it was pointed out, I think maybe Ms. Laraba and other members have also pointed out that, at the end of the day, we just need to make the positive decision, have our debates, have the votes, and talk to our folks, our employees, to see where they feel that they would best want to make some concessions. I think we've, dealing with K through eight tonight, the principals have had their ongoing dialogue. They've had, they challenged each other. The administration has challenged them, and now the committee's beginning to challenge the administration. And that will go forward again on May 19th, when the official budget book is released, and then subsequently we'll have our official, you know, first vote or meeting or hearing where, both on the 19th and the subsequent meeting, the public will be, you know, obviously are going to participate in that endeavor. I don't want to go on and on. There was a lot of positive feedback from a lot of areas. Mr. Conway pointed out that, obviously, we're not going to all agree in these areas, but we can all agree that we'd rather not cut anything that we're being requested to make a cut on. Unfortunately, the way the economy's going this year, and, and again, we're being cognizant, next year won't be much better. This is another year in the making. It shouldn't be a surprise to, to folks. But I think what we're going to do is sharpen our pencils in different areas, be aggressive maybe in some areas we weren't thinking of being aggressive in, and, and pull together to make this work because we do have great people working for us. We've got a great management team in place, both senior and in our schools, and I know we can do it. So, it won't be easy. I think that is a, I guess a, I want to put one thing. May 10th on Monday, we will be having the Lowell High School Finance Meeting at Lowell High School in the library. It will be not televised but filmed, so they'll be able to see the, the meeting in its entirety. So, for folks coming to the City Hall next week, it's going to be at the high school in the library, where there should be ample room for folks and ample opportunity for discussion. And again, the 19th is the date that the administration proposed budget will be officially in the, the budget books. So, I, I make that as a motion, as a report of progress at this time. Thank you.
Motion by Mr. Larry, seconded by Mr. Conway. Any further discussion on the report? Hearing done, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, to vote? Thank you, Mr. Larry. Our report of the superintendent, Madam Superintendent, Level Four School Update.
Thank you, Your Honor. At this time, I'd like to just give the school committee an update on our Level Four planning process, as this process is very involved and ongoing. And I know this Saturday morning in Marlborough, we'll have an opportunity to meet with the Deputy Commissioner as a group to go into even more detail. But as we've been sending things out in your FYI packets with regards to how stakeholder groups are, are made up and redesign teams, the definition of that, all these are new terms, not only for the committee but the administration and the staff at the Merklin School as well. But I would like the community as a whole to know that Jason DeCarlo has been named as the principal of the Merklin School. And again, the guidelines around expectations of certain leadership qualities are clearly outlined in the literature around Level Four schools, and we're to report out to the Department of Ed on why we think this particular person meets those, that criteria. We were required to apply for an early implementation grant last Friday, which we did do, and it's for the amount of up to $100,000. Again, that money will be used to develop the plan. We are expecting, at the latest, to apply for the second round of money by December of this coming year. There are some schools in Bossen, I believe, who are on what they call a fast track, who may have their plan done by July. They started many moons before the rest of the state, my understanding. But that is the timeline right now that we're targeting, is December, and that would entitle us to upward to $500,000 over, in the next, over the next two fiscal years. So, not this coming year, but the year after and the year after that. As well, we get continuous updates around the expectation of Level Four, that the state has been, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and the Deputy Commissioner, Carl Brooks-Brier, has, you know, have been very helpful and have had weekly calls with us. We have regular meetings with the commissioner, Deputy Commissioner, on this topic, as there are nine districts in the state who have Level Four schools, for the amount of 37 schools. At this time, there could be upward to 72 schools identified in the state, but the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education feels at this time that, that the, the number of schools that have been identified basically maxes out their capacity to service and to work with the schools in question, because it is a great deal of work on the department's behalf as, as well as our staff. We continue to analyze the data and develop the root causes. The department is really working with us to determine, looking at our data, what are the root causes for the underperformance at these Level Four schools and what needs to be addressed. There is an expectation that the decisions that we make will be data-driven, that we'll have community input, which is addressed in part through the last bullet on this list with regards to the stakeholder group. And as reported out on the floor a number of weeks ago now, the stakeholder group is made up of representatives throughout our school community and different state agencies as well. One of the concerns and issues that did come up with regards to an issue that the staff at the Merklin School and the administration has is with regards to how many students coming into the kindergarten class of the Merklin do not receive pre-K. And we met with, at the suggestion of Assistant Superintendent Murphy and her early childhood staff with the Commissioner of Early Childhood and talked about this concern. And the Commissioner, Sherri Killens, she does have a lot of stimulus money that she's able, she believes at this time to target our Level Four school and the establishment of a pre-K class. Our concern was that there are many children in the acre who do not come to school till, to grade, you know, to kindergarten, and that we wanted those students to be able to have access to pre-K at their neighborhood school, being the Merklin School. And we suggested to the Commissioner that we really did think that this would be a unique partnership between the K-12, Mitchell Chester's vision and mission around a Level Four school and joining up with her department to make the early ed piece come alive. She agreed. When I initially phoned her and discussed the, the possibility of this, she was quite eager to come and discuss further, and she, she, they have done that, they have visited the Merklin School, and they are at this point committed and see no obstacles to us establishing two full-day kindergartens. We presently have two half-day kindergarten programs at the Merklin School, which basically are citywide pre-K classes. And what happens right now, the pattern of enrollment there, is that children enter in and then go to other schools throughout the system. So, again, we will move those two pre-K classes to another location, which we'll report out on as soon as we determine and finalize this plan to the committee. But we are working on that. But we do feel that the students at the Merklin School would benefit greatly from an early childhood program. And then, as I mentioned, the stakeholder group will convene. At the same time that the stakeholder group is convening, we have also begun to come up with our redesign team. And the redesign team is a school-based team, and they are ultimately the ones who will be implementing the plan. The stakeholder group, if you can view it this way, it's a very similar role as a, as school council is to a principal. So, a stakeholder group will give suggestions, make recommendations for what should be included in the plan. Ultimately, the superintendent has to approve and sign off on the plan. It goes to the Commissioner. The Commissioner also has to sign off on the redesign plan. We have every intention, obviously, in Mitchell Chester signing off on Lowell Public Schools' plan for Level Four, and at that time, we can compete for further dollars. To the extent that a school does not receive the endorsement of the Commissioner, you are not able to. So, that's the update. Right now, again, there are many more details that I'm sure we'll hear about on Saturday morning. Thank you, Your Honor.
Chair recognizes Ms. Martin.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of quick questions. I know you, you had talked about the stakeholders team. Could you repeat that again? Who's, what, who makes up that team?
There, it's a 13-member team, and there are district personnel, members from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Again, Commissioner Killens also said that she would have a representative on it, somebody who is invested in getting the two pre-K classes, as well as community agencies, teachers. And there are four positions that are, can be defined by this, by the superintendent. I've also spoken to the mayor. He's to appoint somebody from the school committee as well to the stakeholder group. So, it's a wide range of individuals.
Perfect. Thank you. My other question was, how many strands are there currently at the Merklin?
How many strands? Four?
Four? My, my final question would be, and I bring this up knowing that it could lead to a lot of questions and concerns, but as we're talking about a school that does have such a profound need, and we're talking about kids coming into this pre-K program specifically from that neighborhood, that, you know, we're, we're looking for families who are basically going to make a commitment to that school for the next, you know, six years of their, their students' lives. Would we be, could we consider that it would be a unique situation where this additional funding's coming in, that a portion of that could be allocated towards the transportation costs in a pre-K environment? I'm, I'm slow to make that recommendation because I know this, myself and this entire committee has been committed to bringing back pre-K transportation.
I know.
Because we recognized how we lost so many students, because if they didn't get transported, they simply, families didn't have the capacity, which is why so many students at the Merklin currently go to other, other schools. Because they are, it's, it's a limited number of programs, and the only people who can get into it are the ones who have cars. So that they will drive to the Merklin for this class, for this pre-K experience, and then go to their more traditional choice, you know, within the district. So perhaps we should consider with this $500,000 in the second or third, wherever that is, that one of the ways that we could really get families to make the commitment to the school and participate in this, this pre-K experience would be if we included transportation as part of that, as part of the offer, as part of the package.
Madam Superintendent?
Could I ask Assistant Superintendent Murphy, just to expand on that? Because we did have a full discussion on that, on your concern, because it has been ongoing, and that was a big hurdle for us. But I think we have some good news with regards to that.
When we met with the Commissioner, we talked specifically about the transportation and what a full day, two full-day pre-Ks would look like for that school. And we also spoke about tying in with adult education, because if we're looking at contracted slots for the state, where the state would be funding the slots for us, then the parents have to be in a program or working 20 hours a week. So, we're looking at designing something for those parents who are not currently employed that we could maybe bring in adult education, and they could be in a school program, either working toward a GED, working through ESOL. And that way, we would actually have the parents coming into the school, and we're hoping to, to get some real tie-in with the school community.
Thank you. Any further comments? Mr. Leahy?
Thank you. With this plan now, that we have to still cut three teachers from the Merklin, and then we go through this planning?
Right.
Madam Superintendent, yes?
Oh, sorry, through you too, Superintendent.
That's a good question, Mr. Leahy, and the difficulty that we face in Lowell, and I've had this very frank conversation with the Merklin staff since November, and as well with the Department at various meetings that we have. We are facing a financial crisis, and it's not like we don't have other schools who have just as much need as the Merklin, and they're just on the cusp of being the Merklin. So, the difficult conversation that we've had as a cabinet is, you know, the Merklin School actually, and perhaps a little ironically, is in a very good position compared to our other schools, because they are eligible for many additional resources, financially and human resources, that some of our other schools, who are very close to a Level Four status, do not have. So, at this time, unfortunately, I have to make the recommendation to the committee that with regard to Chapter 70 cuts, that the Merklin School is in the mix, and that we try to make up any shortfall through these additional funds, funding sources, which, again, this conversation has been had with the Merklin staff. I just didn't see it any other way. It's not like the Merklin School is on an island, and we don't have other schools who are just as needy in many, many ways. So, you know, although $100,000, we are very grateful if we get that grant from the state. It's in the context of us cutting that we receive another $500,000 by next year this time. Again, we will be very grateful. But to the extent that it's replacing people that we used to have, it's going to impede the intent, the mission of being a Level Four school and having those additional dollars. And again, I don't mean to sound ungrateful, or, but I'm just realistic, and I have been with the staff and I have been with the department, that, you know, these additional dollars are greatly appreciated, but they are in the context of a bucket with a big hole in it. And I do have to look out for the rest of the district as well. So, I appreciate the question, Mr. Leahy, but that really is the reality, that we have many needs across our system.
So, what, what happens when we come up with the Commissioner with a, a plan of action and a, how do we implement it if we don't have any money over there?
Great. Thank you. Again, another great question. This actually is just a classic example of Lowell Public Schools thinking outside the box, and our staff really approached the Commissioner of Early Education for additional funds. So, we're really trying to connect her vision of pre-K to the importance of a Level Four school. Right now, Level Four schools across the Commonwealth are not necessarily going to that department and asking for these additional funds like we have. So, we're asking them, Mr. Leahy, to fund it all. We're asking them.
That's my, that's my point. You know, you have a Level Four schools across the state, and we don't have preschool, we don't have reading teachers, and, I mean, where are we going with this? I mean, you don't have to answer that, but, I mean, you know.
Any other, Ms. Laraba?
Just, I, I think where we're going with it is trying to, to find a new, new way to, to... Well, there's an analogy there that I can't, that I'm trying to figure out. I, I think, I'm impressed that they, they did go that step and talk to them, and if they're going to pay for it, all, all the better. I think the reality is that we, we still need to have the equity across the district. But where we're going with this is, is hopefully get a, a pre-K program in there that'll get the kids that much ready for kindergarten, if I understand this correctly.
Correct.
That much ready for kindergarten, it'd be like a neighborhood school, or it would be a neighborhood school, and therefore the kids and the parents, if you're bringing the parents in, which I think is a fabulous idea.
That's correct.
And have them invest in the school, then, then you can hopefully get some parent participation beyond that, which, as we all know, is the hardest thing to achieve in any school, given everybody's working schedules and stuff. So, I think, in terms of that specific situation, I think you're moving forward, and I think that's a great, that's a great way to, to have attacked the problem. And, you know, the fact that you got them to, to agree to pay for it. Can I hand you some of my bills? Have them pay for that?
Any other comments? Would my colleagues mind if I made a quick comment from the chair? As Superintendent Scott mentioned in her report, that the chairperson of the school committee can either serve or appoint or designate, and earlier this evening, I did ask Mr. Larry as vice-chair of the school committee to represent me on the stakeholders group, or within the stakeholders group, and he graciously agreed. So, I just want to make sure that my colleagues know that Mr. Larry will be representing the chairperson of the school committee within, in the stakeholders group.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Any other comments? We accept the report as a report of progress. I'm Mr. Leahy, seconded by Ms. Laraba. All those in favor signify by saying aye. So, thank you. On a new business, I believe we took up the inner, inter-district choice under the special order of business. So, if I could, look to Ms. Laraba for suspension of the rules. If you could just explain your reason for suspension, and then I'll look for a second.
I just wanted to report on a couple of programs that I have attended in the last week, just to let the public know about them and the fellow school committee members.
Do I have a second on the suspension? By Ms. Doherty. All those in favor of suspending the rules for the purpose of hearing the updates, signify by saying aye. Opposed, to vote? Thank you. Chair recognizes Ms. Laraba.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to extend to the, to the committee and our parents that there were a couple of activities that I've attended in the last week that bear some mentioning. The first was, on Saturday night, I went to the high school to see the high school performance of the Wiz, and I have to tell you, very impressive. The kids did an awesome job, and, and listening to them talk about the teachers that had brought them through that, and the musicians, it was really, it was a great show to see, and it was great to see that, that they had spent an awful lot of time working and, and the
it was great to see that they had spent an awful lot of time working, and the finished project, product was just fabulous. And for $10, I don't think you can beat that kind of entertainment. So kudos to the Lowell High School group. Another program that I attended, as well as many of my fellow school committees' members, was the bullying program at the high school. Again, another great program. I was happy to hear that we had taped the program and had the intent to put it on community television and work with, again, having that presentation in the fall, I thought it was, and he fast-paced it. I mean, apparently, it's usually a two-hour presentation, but he fast-paced it, and his pace was very good, and he had a good way with the, with the audience, I thought. So thank you very much for making that happen. I appreciate it. And then finally, last night, being new to the school committee, I got a chance to attend the Rotary Club's Teacher Appreciation Dinner last night. It was great to see the turnout of teachers. I have to tell you, listening to the nomination stories was very eye-opening for me as a parent, but to listen to the quotes from the kids as they talked about their favorite teacher and why they thought they should be Teacher of the Year was really heartwarming. And it just goes to show you the impact that the teachers have on these students, especially there was one student that talked about the relationship with the teacher and how that teacher steered her on to be the person that she is today. So I think that's an acknowledgement of the large role the teachers play in our students' lives. My congratulations to all the nominees and to the winners, and thank you very much for allowing me to attend that event. And thank you for allowing me to suspend the rules.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing those up. Anyone else have any items or run the suspension? Hearing none, getting back to the regular agenda. Next item, convention and conference requests. We have none. Next item, communications. Lowell telecommunications, Channel 10, broadcast of school committee meetings live on the first and third Wednesdays of the month, Thursdays at 6:00 p.m., Saturdays and Sundays at 2:00 p.m., and Tuesdays at 10:00 a.m. Except for communication, placed on file by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Leary. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, to vote. On the professional personnel, we have a letter from Paul Georges, President of UTL, addressed to Dr. Scott. The members of the United Teachers of Lowell hereby request to donate sick leave days to the following paraprofessional, Mary Papa Giorgio, McCall of School, 10 days. Again, need a motion to accept by Mr. Leary, seconded by Ms. Laribar. Roll call.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Ms. Laribar?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Melanazo?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Thank you. Any civil service issues tonight? Motion by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Mr. Conway, that we adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, to vote. Thank you.